Ymirintzantaisais, Naliasituen Guam is back in session. When we recessed, we are resuming on Bill Number 108 that we had set aside. And there was a request at that time that I, as Oversight Chair, invite the Director and Deputy Director to be present. Just want to announce that I received a message. Madam Speaker, Deputy Director is currently in a meeting with Lieutenant Governor, and I am in a meeting regarding the lab to handle some issues that were just presented. We are unable to attend today. My apologies. When we left off, we were on Amendment Number AB108-TTT, Line Number, Page 9. It's on the effective date. That's the amendment we're on. And when we left off, I believe Senator Blas, you had the floor regarding the amendment.
I just want a point of, I have a point of inquiry, Madam Speaker. My understanding is when we left off, there was, it was, Bill was set aside so that we get clarification of whether the letter that was submitted was the position of DPHSS. I don't recall that it was, that we set aside because we were requesting someone to come into the hall. So is that my, that was my understanding. Is that not the, on the record, that it was to seek clarification?
Yes, that's also, that was what was stated, yes. And then there were, yeah, there were several requests at that time. But pretty much Senator Blas had the floor, so we're going to resume with him.
Thank you.
Sidos Massey. Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I think that actually, I had made the motion, but then she had the floor after that. The Vice Speaker had the floor after that.
Senator Blas, I think...
There was a discussion on my motion, and there was, discussion was left off with the Vice Speaker, ma'am.
All right. Well, that's not what the clerk's records are showing. So are you, are you not going to speak on this amendment?
No.
Well, take a one-minute recess, and I'm going to confer with the clerks, because that's not the record that's showing. One-minute recess. We're back in session from recess, having conferred with the clerk. We are still on the Titikui Amendment, TTT, page 9, effective date. And after Senator Blas spoke on the amendment, then Vice Speaker Munia Barnes spoke on the amendment. So Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you have the floor on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, I do have an answer based on the motion to set aside. So if I may, there was a letter that was received on June 30, 2021, from the administration's perspective, inclusive of public health, and I'd like to read that into the record, please.
You're free to speak on the amendment, yes.
Well, then consider speaking on the amendment. Letter dated June 30 of 2021 to the Honorable Mary Camacho Torres, clarification on discussions pertaining to Bill 108-36 and 109-36. Hafaday Senator Torres, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Lieutenant Governor Tenorio, and I firmly supports Bill 108-36 and 109-36. The letter sent yesterday to the legislature from DPHSS was intended to fulfill the public hearing requirement for written testimony. At the bill's public hearing, DPHSS had only presented oral recommendations and was asked to document their presentation for record purposes. The letter yesterday, although submitted late, reflects the presentation for recommendations conveyed by DPHSS at the hearing. To be clear, no part of the testimony indicates opposition to the bills or presents new recommendations from what was conveyed at the public hearing. We believe that it is necessary to provide the following clarification, considering that previously submitted letters were written by two cabinet members representing the same department that led to some confusion. Since January, the Department of Youth Affairs Director Lonnie Brennan has been detailed to the Bureau of Social Services Administration, BOSA, under DPHSS, at my direction to improve efficiencies and the effectiveness of services and programs of which led to the placement of minors, including foster children. After the bill's public hearing, Director Brennan reached out to your office regarding the articulated concerns, and an amendment was developed to address them. Thank you for including the amendment in the final version of your bill, and we stand by this amendment to ensure strong and proper oversight of adoption agencies. On the first concern regarding the regulation of private adoption agencies, it was discussed that DPHSS is empowered to do so through its enabling act as the regulatory authority for child welfare and child placement. On the second concern regarding the timeline for the monitoring of placement for up to one year, it was discussed that 19 GCA Section 4211 already allows for the residency requirement to be waived by the court if it is satisfied that the best interests of the child will be furthered. On the third concern regarding the inclusion of a representative from an independent adoption agency to the Adoption Selection Committee, the ASC, it was discussed that the term "independent" indicates that the representative will be from an adoption agency not involved in the case, which will not present a conflict of interest. Furthermore, four of the five votes in the ASC are to be made up by the adoption supervisor and the remaining social workers who hold a supermajority of the votes. On the fourth concern regarding not requiring a meeting of the ASC for relinquished infants under the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act, Nisha, it was discussed that the intent of taking it out of the process was due to the fact that such infants are 30 days or younger, and the bill requires a meeting of the ASC for infants older than one month. Furthermore, mothers express no clear intention to return four newborn infants under Nisha and ASC members, such as the caseworkers of the natural parents, would not be applicable. I'm sorry. On the final concern regarding the regulation of temporary shelter care homes, once again, DPHSS is empowered to do so through its enabling act as the regulatory authority for child welfare and child placement. This letter represents the collective view of DPHSS and our administration. We support efforts to encourage responsible and caring adults to adopt children who are in need of loving and supportive homes, and we believe your introduction of these bills further that goal. We commend the bill's 10 sponsors led by yourself for the work put into these measures. Sidos Massey, Sincedamente, Lourdes A. Leon Guero, Magahaga Guam, Governor of Guam. Madam Speaker, this will see see to all senators. Sign them, Massey.
Sign them, Massey. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? Just to refresh your memories, we've already spoken on this amendment. We're the sponsor, of course, Senator Torres, myself, Senator Vice Speaker, and Senator Blas. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, you know, heard the letter that was written by the governor, and I'm not surprised, I guess, perhaps the most diplomatic way to deal with this issue for the administration. I mean, truly, perhaps the Director and Deputy are unavailable to have very pressing meetings that neither one of them are able to come down to the legislature this afternoon to ask questions. Interesting, the governor would take the time to write a letter on this issue, because certainly, you know, I mean, the position of this administration with regards to the most vulnerable in our community is certainly something that I'm not supportive of. So it's interesting that they've felt a need to interject on this particular piece of legislation. It's nice that they perhaps had this meeting, but again, Madam Speaker, having participated in the virtual public hearing, I wish that these engagements and discussions had happened at a public forum, where not only those of ourselves as legislators could ask questions directly and hear the feedback of the professionals in public health that have dealt with child protective services for many years, but the public, more importantly, would have had the opportunity to do that. I think the intent of where we're going here, without putting such requirements in place of having rules and regulations to essentially oversee the operations of an adoption agency, which we want to standardize for any adoption agency that may be interested in setting up shop on Guam, is to ensure that standards are being met, that protective measures are being put in place, that the individuals that are working in these adoption agencies are going to meet those standards. And I still value the input, and I'm not going to put Mr. Uggan in a difficult position, because granted, you know, he's a Deputy Director and the governor's his boss, and I guess the governor says, "This is what I want." But I'm going to defer to what he relayed in his letter, and certainly the concerns that were relayed during the public hearing, because I'm not going to think that public health and the professionals of public health are all in concurrence, because the governor sends a letter and says, "This is what transpired." Because if you recall, Madam Speaker, that particular public hearing, every representative from public health testified against this bill and raised these concerns, and certainly Mr. Uggan raised concerns with regards to this process, to ensure that things and time were looked at in an extended fashion, simply because of the importance of who and what we're dealing with. We're dealing with our children. And the fact that we are having to debate, think about this, Madam, the fact that we're having to debate putting in place very clearly in law language that would require the standards under which an adoption agency would have to operate on Guam, you got to wonder where our priorities are. The fact that there's been such resistance to including that language, which certainly if that were in place, I would have no problem voting for this bill. And the fact that you've had long-term professionals that have worked in this field, I value that input. Because they've experienced what it's like in the real world, to have to take care of and assist and facilitate for these children. All the things we discussed this week, as I mentioned, probably is not as important as this particular issue. And I think the lack of dialogue concerning this issue, the lack of public engagement on this issue, the fact that we don't have public discussion, or we didn't have any further public discussion before this bill was put on the floor. Why? What's so urgent that we can't do that, especially when the requests were made to do so? Because I feel for the professionals at public health. What can they do now? Are they going to take on the governor? They're going to take on their director now, because their input now and their voices have officially been silenced? Colleagues, we have a responsibility in this government when we make policy, because we're only here as caretakers, as I said. We're just here as caretakers for a time. We're here to make sure that all our odds and ends and sizes of all of us that are here, you know, ultimately reflect the public expectation and standard. We're not here because we're the best people to decide the laws that should be imposed upon our people. We're here to bring to light their voices and their expectations of what they want to see in their community, how they want these laws put in place for them. Obviously, these children cannot speak for themselves. Certainly, we have an expectation that we want to ensure that they go from what may be an unfortunate circumstance in their family life with a birth parent or birth parents to a safer, loving, caring home. And I simply want to ensure that those children are being put in the hands of an organization that has standards, requirements, and rules and regulations under which they have to operate. You know, Senator Tello had made the comment that, my goodness, we have these things in place for cosmetology. We have these requirements in place to cut people's hair and do their nails and pluck their eyebrows. Look at all the standards a cosmetologist even has to meet to get a license, to be a licensed cosmetologist on Guam. And those are things that are superficial. That's on the surface. But we refuse to include such requirements to be put in place to operate an adoption agency on this island. Again, we've not had one before that I'm aware of. And so as we venture down this road, that is not an unrealistic expectation. Our children deserve that. Our children deserve that protection. So for colleagues, for those of you that are not so hell-bent of moving this bill forward without addressing these concerns, please be open to that. To pass this legislation without having these standards in place is irresponsible. We are being irresponsible. We are being irresponsible. Our job certainly, anyone can introduce a bill certainly on the floor of this legislature, but we all have a responsibility to be engaged in that discussion. And to me, this is a very basic, this is not just a basic concern, it's a fundamental concern and a requirement that we should have in place. The existing language that's referred to in sections, I mean, we can sit here and reiterate and read all the sections of the law and sound like we know what we're talking about, but I look at the Pheno English, and I still don't see where it says that these regulations and rules and structures are in place for an adoption agency. Requiring public health to put that in place prior to even having an adoption agency set up that can operate on Guam, to me, is not an unrealistic requirement. It should be a standard requirement, as we have for so many other things that we regulate here in our community. So, Madam Speaker, I, once again, I stand in support of this amendment, and colleagues, I hope you think very seriously about this issue, because if we were to move this legislation forward without these requirements, we're shortchanging our children. We're shortchanging the most vulnerable in this community that we should be representing. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this amendment. I think it is a common sense amendment, considering that there is new language being placed into, you know, the bill that oversees, the law that oversees child placement. So I just want to make it clear that all these safeguards are directed towards Department of Public Health, and by adding a private entity, it is unclear whether those safeguards also apply. And I think it's very important, if we're adding a new entity, that there should be, at the minimum, licensing procedures, as we've seen in other jurisdictions. And in looking at some of the other, these other jurisdictions, there are cases where families that have adopted come to realize that the child that they have adopted, they didn't expect to have certain ailments, and the state undergoes lawsuits. And I think if we are to ensure that, you know, we, you know, I think it's important part of good governance to ensure that there are procedures in place and to minimize lawsuits. I think that's, that's important to think about when we put these laws, when we enact these laws, what are the, what is the effect? And also, too, what is the best interest of the child? It ultimately comes down to what is the best interest of the child? Is it the best interest of the child to have them place only to find out that the parents cannot handle the situation, the ailments? They didn't have the capacity. And I think that's why it's worthwhile to take the time to really develop these procedures, these regulations, because it's ultimately the, we're looking at the interest of the child. And so I rise in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. Senator, you already spoke on this amendment.
I just want to raise a point of order, Madam Speaker. I believe that one member of this body was permitted to speak twice on the amendment.
Do you see that? Thank you for the point of order. We're going with the clerk's notes at this point, and that's, so I do not, according to the clerk, all members have only, who spoke, have only spoken once on the amendment, this amendment. We will allow the sponsor to close.
Sidos Massey, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. You know, before we took a break and before we set aside this, this bill, to get some answers, because a letter that came to us actually, from an individual who, who's been at public health for almost two decades, as well as being a foster parent himself, provided this letter to Senator, to the author of this legislation. And many of it, many of it just made sense, but there was nothing in this, in his letter, that said that he was against adoption. There was none. And I don't think anyone in this body is against having an adoption agency on this island. None of us. I think what's happening here, and the argument that's happening here, is that many of us are concerned that if anyone does come to the island and open up an adoption agency, especially some, someone from off-island who is not from Guam, that there are rules and regulations that are put in place, standards that were made from other adoption agencies at other states, people who studied this on the best interest of a child, for instance, not taking the child off-island, keeping it off-island or out of the district. They talked about Native American Indians, how to keep the child within their own race, with their own jurisdiction, and why that was so important. The guidelines that are in the Guam Code annotated in the law are guidelines that were created for Department of Public Health and Social Services. The guidelines that were created in the rules and regulations were also created for adopting, how to adopt, and for Department of Public Health and Social Services. But there is nothing in the law on rules and regulations, standards, for companies coming here opening up as adoption agencies. Nothing. The letter that was read into the The letter that was read into the record from the governor, it says here, in an area about Lonnie Brennan, who she has placed into BSA, Bureau of Social Service Administration, she, she was a director at DYA, and they gave her this position to oversee, and, Madam Speaker, she just got into this position not too long ago. Not too long ago. But there's a wealth of history and information and process and social workers that have been dealing with this for decades and decades. She just got this a year ago. And the comments that were made here that, including, it says, "Thank you for including amendments in the final version of your bill. We stand by this amendment and ensure strong and proper oversight of adoption agencies." Again, Madam Speaker, it's like the cart before the horse. And in the bill, it talks about, which, so, "The department will reevaluate the areas of noncompliance within six months after completion of an audit. Within six months after completion of an audit, the agency shall provide, adoption services shall complete the plan of action and demonstrate that it has been made sufficient progress." Okay? They have six months if they don't follow a, a regulation, or here it's 30 days after receipt of notice. This is all after the fact, after the fact. This doesn't guide getting an individual, their license to be an adoption agency. This is after the fact. What we're trying to do is be responsible and put into law right now, rules and regulations and standards for these companies. And that's all what this amendment does. It's very simple. You know, I kept reading over and over the governor's letter, and I don't see anything that, here, that would really be overtaken by the letter we received by Deputy Director Uggan, who, again, has been at Public Health for decades, who then been a foster parent, who knows the ins and outs of what it, what it takes to take care of a child. It just boggles me how, all of a sudden, we get a letter the other day to counteract I thank Mr. Uggan for his courage and his morals, because he is having the, our children on Guam to have the best, at the best interest, the best care they can get, especially those who are in a predicament that just, it's sad. It's very sad to see these children who already has been abandoned, or their parents aren't able to take care of them. It's already sad about that. And now what's even worse is that this body doesn't even put rules and regulations to govern these agencies, these private companies coming into this island to place children. And we don't even know who they are. Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues, please, this is very simple, just put in rules and regulations. That's all we're asking for. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and please, in good conscience, let's do something that will help these children. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there an objection? There's an objection.
Roll call, roll call, Madam Speaker.
There's one call for roll call, two calls for roll call, three calls for roll call, four calls for roll call. Clerk, please take roll call on the amendment. Clerk, please take roll. Senator Adal. Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
I move to excuse members not present.
On the motion to excuse members not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Clerk, please proceed.
Senator Adal excused. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson excused. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, nay. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Tidaway. Senator Tidaway, aye. Senator Turlahey. Senator Turlahey, nay. Speaker Turlahey. Speaker Turlahey, aye. Senator Torres.
Motion fails. Senator Tidaway, you are recognized.
Situas, ma'am, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have another amendment. It's on page two, line 14. If I may.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, it's number four, like I said, line fourteen. And the child, number four, and the child live in the adoption home for a period of up to one year under the guidance and supervision of Social Service or an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law. Madam Speaker, my amendment simply crosses out "up to" and maintains the one year under the guidance. Madam Speaker, this section in the, in the Administrative Rules and Regulations is different from what's in the Guam Code annotated. In fact, the governor states in her letter, in one of her paragraphs, that "on the second concern regarding timeline for monitoring of the placement of up to one year, it was discussed in 19GCA 4211, already allows for the residency requirement to be waived by the court if it is satisfied that the best interest of the child will be furthered." Madam Speaker, in this section of law, it basically says that the child will be there for 12 months unless waived by the courts, but that's in the Guam Code annotated. However, in this bill, you're changing that, what's in the Guam Code annotated, not, I'm sorry, you're changing the Guam, the rules and regulations, but yet the Guam Code annotated still has 12 months. So there's this conflict. Which one does Public Health follow? Is it the Guam Code annotated, or is it GAR, Administrative Rules and Regulations? However, Madam Speaker, the reason why I'm proffering this amendment is a comment that was made by Terry Uggan. And he says that the child live in adoptive home for a period of one year. The monitoring period is a tool that an experienced adoption slash custody worker will use to safeguard the placement of a child in their new adoptive home. The time is used to assess the child's attachment to the adopted family and to observe if the child is bonding to their new environment. It is also a time to assess if the child's needs are being met and to address concerns or issues about the adoptive placement. Page two, line 11, provides a maximum timeline but fails to provide a minimum timeline for the monitoring of placement. In my experience working with VOSAS, Adoption and Custody Unit, Halt International requires a four-year monitoring period for the placement of a child in a prospective adoptive home. Guam only requires a period of one year in comparison. I recommend we maintain the current provision of one-year monitoring period and no less. It's been recommended to keep this. Madam Speaker, can you imagine, by incorporating this language "up to," that child could be in that home for only one day? One day? And then they would stop monitoring that home where the child has been placed, or the baby has been placed. It could be two weeks, and then it could stop. When you say "up to," Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for their support, at least, let's be able to monitor this child for at least, for, on both sides. I think one of the speakers earlier, you know, from, from Baragata Heights, who mentioned that this, you know, placing a child in a home and the parents are actually, after realizing they don't want to be parents, or they're, they just are not being very good parents. You're not going to know that in one day, two weeks, three weeks, a month. It may take about a year. I mean, the Halt International group requires four years in most states, four years to monitor these children in their new placement, in their new home, in a new environment, and if they're taking to it. Guam is one year. Now we want to take that away and say, no need to monitor them. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for my colleagues' support, at least, let's keep this one-year period in to assess, to make sure that our children, let's be the guardian angels these children deserve. By voting yes on this bill, on this, this amendment, we become their guardian angel. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the Senator, Senator Torres, on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, this amendment is to the section in the bill that is the, that is the intent in GAR. That's to the portion of the Guam Administrative Rules, the intent period. I object to this amendment, because if you read the entire Adoption Policies and Control Chapter, which is 26GAR, you will see that the supervisory period is up to one year. It's specified in Section 1311, Post Placement Services or Removal. And so, in, the, the reason that we changed it, as we did in page two, is just to be consistent, and page two is just the intent, and it's already captured in GAR in 1311. So we were just making that consistent by inserting "up to one year." And with regard to other jurisdictions that have up to four years, I believe that has to do with international adoptions. In this case, by statute, and it's been happening for, statute has been in place for decades, it has been up to one, one year. Prior to the, as it reads in 1311, Post Placement Services or Removal, under subsection A, after the child is placed in an adoptive home, there shall be a supervisory period of up to one year prior to the consummation of the adoption, during which the department, the Department of, this would be Social Services, shall have supportive assistance to the adoptive parents in adjusting to the child and integrating the child into the family. It will consist of scheduled visits, at least quarterly, in which the worker will monitor the child and the child's family's adjustment to each other. So I'm just basically changing it here, Madam Speaker, in this section, to be consistent with what's in the GAR. I'm not changing anything, I'm just making it consistent in the intent with where it's spelt out very clearly in Section 1311. And so I object to this amendment. Thank you. No, it's in the GAR, 26GAR, it's Section 1311, Post Placement Services or Removal. So that is already the language in there. It's already in there. So I'm just updating the intent so that it's consistent with, with that.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker, you are recognized on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, maybe just to follow up on that and my objection to this amendment, and if you read the entire Adoption Policies and Control Chapter, specifically Section 1311, you will see that the supervisor period is up to one year. Section 1311, Post Placement Services or Removal, A, after the child is placed in an adoptive home, there shall be a supervisory period of up to one year prior to the consummation of the adoption, during which time the department shall give supportive assistance to the adoptive parents in adjusting to the child and integrating the child into the family. So, Madam Speaker, we have changed it here to be consistent with the section which has been law for decades. So just thought I'd bring that up and share my objection to this amendment.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. On the amendment, Senator Brown? Do you want to speak on the amendment? You are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Yes, I do rise in support of the amendment, which also, the sponsor's...
Senator Brown, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm here. Were the, the sponsor is also removing the review, the end of this review period of the adoption agency, being able to do, essentially review this evaluation period, be it up to one year, right? Or adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law. And she's removing that language. I think it's appropriate, Madam Speaker, because again, we're having, you know, we use the words duly licensed as if, what does that mean, duly licensed? I went to Rev. Tax and I got my license to open up my adoption agency. Sounds so profound, but that's pretty much what it is. That's pretty much all it is right now. I'm concerned about that, because again, we don't have any rules and regulations and structure under which an adoption agency is going to operate on Guam. We go back to that very main center issue that we keep coming back to. And you know, I have to tell you, this is amazing. It's one of those moments when you see how the politics on Guam rears its ugly head, the dynamics of how this is all being positioned, because it already sounds administration supportive of this without these requirements, a number of members of the legislature supportive of this without these requirements. of this without these requirements. But I think we'll just, you know, continue to bring it to light because I think the fact that we're moving forward and looking at this issue without that being addressed, why are we going to have an adoption agency that has no structure under law and requirements to meet, that we publicly know, that sees the light of day of knowing what those requirements are, overseeing and monitoring of a child that may be in a home up to a month, or up to a year, or up to a day or a week, or whatever the timeframe is? Because we've, we put this in place that it's up to a year. You know, Madam Speaker, a number of years ago, I actually worked with Terry Uggan to set up some of an update, the requirements and the rules and regulations for daycare centers on Guam. Can you imagine that, Madam Speaker? We have such requirements for daycare centers that we put our children in, perhaps because they're yet ready to go to, not yet ready to go to school, or they might require additional care that parents are not able to provide because most of them are working. And those are the kind of standard things we expect of our government to regulate daycare centers because we are leaving our trusted, and entrusting in them our most valuable, probably thing we have in this physical world, our children, our vulnerable young children. And we went at the time to every single daycare center on Guam to determine and look at the current ratio of attendance that they had at these daycare agencies for the number of children we had, you know, they had in those daycares, the care that was being provided, the environment requirements that needed to be met, the training that the attendance there at the daycare center needed to have. Because there are licensing requirements for daycare centers. But yet, we want to move forward without having such licensing requirements for an adoption agency that now we're empowering them to oversee this monitoring period. Amazing. We don't even know who these people are. Today, it's Ohala, tomorrow could be somebody else. But we're empowering them to have that ability without providing any standards or requirements for them to meet. This is where the politics rears its ugly head. Because most of us, we know what the right thing is to do, but we won't do it because, oh, that means we have to bend on our bill. And we're not going to do that. And the governor supports us. How nice. As if that really means something. Because the governor decides, oh, this is how we want, do I care as a policymaker? Not really. That doesn't sanctify this process and make it okay. Gosh, it's amazing, the most interesting debate I've had in the six months is this bill. Because instead of doing what the right thing is, we're going to do it politically, we think is a good thing to do, so that we're all in line with where we should be, rather than doing what's right for our innocent children in this community, our vulnerable population that needs us to make these decisions in their best interest. But we're not going to do it. Colleagues, be mindful of what you're doing with regards to this bill. This bill will come back to knock on our door. Knock, 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 knock. This bill will come back to knock on our door. Because the first time something goes wrong, the first incident that happens with an adoption agency that doesn't go right, I wonder where our people of Guam are going to be looking at going, wow, what did you guys do? I'm not a great political prognosticator, Madam Speaker, what the heck do I know? But mine, be mindful, colleagues, this issue is going to come knocking back on our door. And we see those concerns every day in our community. And the circumstances under which our own children, sometimes really unfortunate circumstances, even within their own homes, that we need to address. Because it's so prevalent. It's a daily, almost weekly thing. When I open the paper, and even though I read it online, I still occasionally get a chance to sit down and hold a paper in my hand, and I read these issues and concerns that are happening in this community. I hate reading about it, but I'll read it. Because it reminds me once again that while we have a lot of good things happening, we still cannot take care of and protect the most vulnerable people in our community. For all that we have, we cannot do that here on this island. We should be making every step we can make, every decision we can make to make it better for our children. This is not an issue we should be turning a blind eye on because we want to play the politics, our own thoughts and ambitions of who and what we think we are. Colleagues, this is going to be a vote of conscience. It's not for me to determine your conscience, that's for you to decide. But I'll have to tell you, this is an issue of concern. If you let this slide by without these rules and regulations, let it be on your shoulders. Because we're already up against a negative tide. Because we can't protect our children in this community. We cannot. We can talk about all the things we'd like to do, but we're not able to do it. And while you each have an opportunity to put these protective measures in place, the majority of members here are still choosing not to do it. People of Guam, be mindful. Be mindful of what is going on here and now with this bill. Because we will address many other issues, the remainder of this, what, year and a half left of this term? But this bill in particular, I have to tell you, is going to come back knocking on our door if this bill gets passed without addressing these requirements. Because now we're willing to give an adoption agency that has no rules and regulations in place that govern that adoption agency to operate and be licensed in this community, That is what we are doing, plain and simple. The governor who's writing this letter, who is very quick to accuse others when she was running for office, and blaming them for what is happening of the abuse of our children, she's empowered in office now to do something good about it. And instead of doing that, oh no, we're going to endorse this bill. We're going to step out of the normal course of events and shower this bill with all our support. As if somehow that makes this bill better because the governor of Guam has, oh, I support this bill? To support this bill without the requirements in place, to allow now the adoption agency to be part of the monitoring of this child? As if they are the government, the extension of the government? That's what we're doing. And we're going to say we're doing something good for the children of Guam. We're going halfway, but we're not going all the way. And again, colleagues, I'm dumbfounded. I am totally dumbfounded that putting these requirements in place, which should be standard, we do it for so many other things in this government, but the fact of your refusal to do it for our children is just mind-boggling. But again, my dear people of Guam, this is where politics rears its ugly head. You want to see the alignments in this legislature? Look at how this bill goes down. That should tell you a lot. It tells me a lot. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Torres, I think you already spoke on the amendment. So, anyone else? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
Situas, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank my colleague who spoke before, that this amendment--
Can we just take one minute? We're on for Amendment Number 6, clerks? You were the second, Senator Torres, you were the second speaker after the proffer of the amendment. We're still on that same amendment. And you objected. All right, sponsor may close on the amendment.
Situas, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank my colleague who spoke before me so passionately. You can tell the importance of children and our children being safe on this island and actually doing something about it and speaking up like she did. Greatly appreciated. And all those who supported the intent of making this a better bill. None of us here, like I said, are against having an adoption agency at all. It's about doing it the right way. And Madam Speaker, you know, in the Guam Code Annotated versus the Guam, the Administrative Rules and regs-- I'm pulling this up if you can. Okay. In the Guam Code Annotated, Section 4211, Resident Requirement. I'd like to read this, Madam Speaker. Again, the Guam Code Annotated. "The hearing on petitions shall not be held until the child has lived 12 months in the home of the petitioner under the supervision of the division." Division meaning social work, CPS. "The 12-month residence requirement, or any part thereof, may be waived by order of the court on the motion of the petitioner of the division involved in proceeding if the court is satisfied with the best interest of the child will be further thereby." I wish I had some reports of how many times this waiver was put into place when it came to a child being placed either in a foster home or an adoption home. There, it's caution. And these judges who do rule on such waivers take this very seriously. They want to make sure that the child is safe. And if this isn't enough time to really monitor, how many times have this been waived, has been put through? I bet it's not very many. Now we're going back, Madam Speaker, to the Guam Code Annotated, in which this bill and my amendment and this section would change. So you heard first from the Guam Code Annotated law saying 12 months. Now here, and it's called Post Placement Service or Removal, this is on the Rules and regs. "After the child is placed in an adoptive home, there shall be a supervisory period of up to one year prior to the consummation of the adoption, during which the time, the department shall give supportive assistance to the adoptive parents in adjusting to the child and integrating the child into the family." It will consist of scheduled visits, at least quarterly, in which the worker will monitor the child's and the child's and family's adjustment to each other. Quarterly, it says, at least quarterly. Again, Madam Speaker, the language in the rules is really not that consistent with GAR, I mean with Guam Code Annotated. Now, in the intent in which this is changing it, intent of the law, it clearly says here, and that the child, that the child live in the adoptive home for a period of one year under the guidance and supervision of Social Services. Why do we want to change this? We have a judicial system, we have the process of social workers providing information to the courts. Why would we want to change something like this? It's not in our privy to do so. It's the judicial branch that does this, with the assistance and advisement of Social The Guam Code Annotated allows the courts to waive if they see this is good for the child, which, like I said, how many judges have waived the ability to monitor a child in a home shorter than a year? When most places are four years. So Madam Speaker, taking this out maintains at least for them to keep the child there for one year, to ensure that the placement was a right decision, for both adoptive parents and the child, which should be the number one concern here, what's in the child's best interest. So thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask my colleagues to please support this amendment.
Thank you, Senator. There's been an objection on the amendment, so all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Taitegui, I see one more amendment here.
Situas, Madam Speaker, and thank you, my colleagues, for indulging me in this. It does mean so much that we do what we can here. That's what we were elected to do, and that is to protect our children, our community, our island, our people of Guam. Madam Speaker, my next amendment is on lines 14 and 15, page 2. It's pretty much in the same area as the amendment I just proffered, to strike out "up to." And Madam Speaker, what I'm doing here is striking out, or an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam. Madam Speaker, the reason why I'm striking this section out is, it's probably easier to explain a scenario and to picture this. You have an adoption agency that has a client who's come to them looking for a child to adopt. There's costs associated with this transaction. Now, in the event that a child comes up for adoption and goes through the process, and the adoption agency calls onto their client, saying, we have a child for you, you've met the criteria, you've done everything, so we're going to place this child in your care. You will be the adoptive parent. So after receiving monetary, you know, for services from the parents to the adoption agency, that's the same agency that's going to be allowed to monitor the child in that Or that baby in that home? Do you see the conflict of interest here? Do you really think that adoption agency who took money from these parents is actually going to say, you know what, I don't think this child's, it's in the best interest, the child doesn't look happy, I don't think, you've left the child unattended a couple of times? Do you think they're really going to say, no, we're going to take this child away from you? Because what's going to happen, Madam Speaker, is another couple who's looking for an adoption agency finds out, oh, this adoption agency, they took, they gave the child to this one family and then later on took the child away. So, Madam Speaker, this is totally a conflict of interest. This is a job for CPS. This is a job for caseworkers that are assigned to these, to the children. So let's leave that up to them, those who are professional, those who've done this many, for many years. And I ask, Madam Speaker, that my colleagues please support this by striking out this adoption agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Torres, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'm just respectfully speaking in an effort to provide clarity to my colleagues. On this amendment, I want to again point out that this is an amendment to Section 1302, which is the intent of the law, in the GAR section that has to do, in the GAR section that has to do with adoptions. Now, whether we take it out of that Section 1302, if we strike those words, whether we strike it or not, let's, it really doesn't have much of an effect. And all that we're doing, I want my colleagues to note that when you go into the actual operative language of the entire chapter, which is, again, Section 1311, Post Placement Services or Removal, you will see that the Department of Public Health is the lead supervisory agency during this one-year period. agency during this one-year period. I did not amend that Section 1311 in any way, Madam Speaker. So regardless of whether we change 1302, the authority of public health to supervise the parents and remove the child if necessary remains. This amendment to Section 1302, the intent doesn't dilute the public health and the courts who have power over our children who are placed and put up for adoption. That power to oversee by public health and the courts is significant, Madam Speaker. And let's not lose sight of that in the discussion. So I object because it really, taking it out of the intent doesn't really make much of a difference, but it just makes it more consistent as we go through the statute because it's really 1311, and all the power is given to the department. And all the laws and the rules and regulations governing adoption do not get diminished in any way. You cannot circumvent Guam laws and the courts when it comes to adoption and the safety of our children. And I'm very well aware of that. And I just want to bring us back to what this amendment, what was suggested this amendment is going to do, does not. The authority of public health to supervise the parents and remove the child if necessary remains because of Section 1311. So I rise in objection respectfully.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise with concern and object to this amendment. And I want to raise a point to my colleagues that we included adoption agencies here to allow them to provide guidance to adoptive parents. As my colleagues will note, the section in the amendment here is under the intent of the law of the Adoption Policies and Control Chapter. When you go into the actual operative language of the entire chapter, specifically Section 1311, you will see that the Department of Public Health is the lead supervisory agency during this one-year period. So Section 1311, post placement services or removal, is after the child is, A, after the child is placed in an adoptive home, there shall be a supervisory period of up to one year prior to the consummation of the adoption, during which time the department shall give supportive assistance to the adoptive parents in adjusting to the child and integrating the child into the family. It will consist of scheduled visits, at least quarterly, in which the worker will monitor the child and family's adjustments to each other. B, the department may remove the child from the adoptive home at any time prior to the completion of the adoption, whenever such action is necessary to protect the well-being of the child. The worker shall discuss the plan to remove the child and basis of such action with the adoptive parents prior to an actual removal. Any substantial child abuse investigation involving said adoptive parents shall be the grounds for removal of the child and cancellation of the proposed adoption. The child shall then revert to the foster care status pending selection of alternative adoptive parents, and if that's possible. We did not amend the section, Madam Speaker. And so regardless of whether we change this, the authority of public health to supervise the parents and remove the child if necessary remains. So just wanted to bring that up and share my thoughts again and share in the objection to this amendment.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Brown, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I mean, I think we certainly want to work towards providing more clarity with regards to this legislation, but I'm going to refer back to the previous amendment that was voted down. You know, at one end, we're saying, "Oh, public health." Well, under the current process, public health maintains that jurisdiction. But if we're going to go back and reference the previous amendment that failed, we put the word with regards to the adoption agency "or." And I understand, Madam Speaker, we're speaking about the current amendment, but, you know, let's talk about the irony of all this. It says in the, the previous amendment said, "And the child shall live in the adoptive home for a period of up to one year under the guidance and supervision of social services," or "an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law." Or, this or that, or. So, you know, I don't understand the clarity. Because we're so adamant that public health under current law does, yes, I'm aware of that. I conferred with someone who has many, 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 many years of experience who retired as a head of CPS about the legal authority over that child for the time that that child is under the umbrella of Child Protective Services. But it's hard to embrace all that when we have "or" language, "or," unlicensed, you know, unregulated. We use the word, "Oh, we're going to regulate them," according to what I'm not going to belabor this, Madam Speaker. I think I've made my point quite clear, but, I mean, let's not be, you know, hypocritical with our comments here. We can go on and cite our views and reference existing statute, but we also have the ability to change, amend, eliminate, add, create law. That's what we get to do. But I don't see how we're providing that clarity when we provide the "or" language. We're giving this adoption agency that is not duly licensed, well, according to this language, duly licensed on Guam, whatever the heck that means, authority and jurisdiction of our children to include the monitoring. It doesn't say that public health will maintain that jurisdiction throughout the lifetime that that child is under their, supposed to be under the care of the government, under Child Protective Services, or, or the adoption agency, or the adoption agency. We're giving them an awful lot of latitude and we're not regulating them according to defined standards in public law that anyone who's in this jurisdiction or comes into this jurisdiction can open the law and say, "These are the requirements." That public health in regulating these, an adoption agency or adoption agencies can come back and say, "Yes, they are or are not meeting these requirements." We're not doing that with this legislation. So I don't think that it's all so clear here that it's "oh," within the jurisdiction of public health, because obviously when we put language "or," at least the last time I checked, the English language, "or," it doesn't say "and," "or," "in," or "under the supervision of." It says "or." Just wanted to provide that point for reference. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then Spencer, you may close on the amendment.
Situs Ma Sina, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, for you to say that it's in, this section is in the intent, and it really doesn't, it's not very important, or it's just in the intent, is so false. Anybody will tell you that when the law is not clear, it's the intent that guides. When it's unsure on which direction to take, they revert back to the intent. I learned that the first time I came into this legislature, in the 30th Guam Legislature. So the intent is very important. Madam Speaker, whether we change this amendment doesn't really do anything because, yeah, that's also false. Of course it does. The previous speaker just said, Madam Speaker, that this section says, "Or an adoption agency duly licensed." Let me say the whole thing again. And the child, number four, "And the child living in the adoptive home for a period of up to one year under the guidance and supervision of social services," or "an adoption agency duly licensed on Guam." It does allow them to do, to monitor. We are taking a private company to do the, to take the job of what CPS has been trained and paid to do. And that's to protect our children. They have the best interest, not a company who's going to be on this island to make some money. Or whether it's a nonprofit, if someone says, "Oh, it's a nonprofit organization," well, nonprofits have people working. They're making salaries, sometimes six-digit salaries. We all want to do what's in the best interests of our children on Guam, Madam Speaker. Social services there to protect our children, our community, our island. We rely on them. And they're accounted for. They have to be transparent. They have to put reports in. They have to follow rules and regs that were governed under this particular law on how children are being adopted and how public health is supposed to handle the adoption agencies, not adoption process. But there's nothing in this law, Madam Speaker, that gives guidelines to a private entity coming on this island to become an adoption agency, nothing. CPS has guidelines that we put in place in both rules and Guam Code Annotated. They have guidelines. And the process, again, of adoption is put in for guidelines for them to follow. So, Madam Speaker, this simply takes out a conflict of interest. And once again, the intent does matter when the law is not clear. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, there has been an objection, so we will call for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Senator Taitegui, you may briefly close. You've exceeded your time, yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to my colleagues. And I appreciate the opportunity to try and be, to try and help our children on this island. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bill. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Perez, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment to proffer. It's line 3, page 9. It's add a new section to the bill. Effective date, this act shall be effective 180 days after enactment. So, as you know, the adoption process is complex, and there's a lot going on, a lot of people involved. It requires the involvement from the government, medical professionals, legal professionals, social workers, public health, and more. And all of these moving parts come together to serve the adoption triad, the parents, the adoptive parents, the birth parents, and the child. So current statutes in GCA, such as Title 19, Chapter 4, enumerate the requirements in order for adoption to take place. And something as important as a placement of a child into a family can't be done haphazardly. There has to be procedures, practices, proven methods of completing, of completing an adoption in a responsible and ethical way. And that's why adoption regulations are the utmost importance. The parties involved, usually involved in adoption, such as courts, attorneys, medical professionals, government social workers, are held to the standards that mandate the best interest of the child. Unfortunately, adding an unregulated party to the adoption mix with no mandated regulations on how they should provide the services is a problem. Because adoption concerns the placement and well-being of an infant or child, these regulations help protect all parties involved and ensure that adoption placements are legal and safe. Without accountability or adherence to adoption agency regulations, an organization has the ability to operate in the adoption process in a harmful and even unsafe way. That's why any family considering adoption is strongly advised to look for a licensed adoption agency bound by adoption regulations and held accountable by an objective reviewer. An outside objective reviewer of an agency's practices is vital. This is the best way to verify that an adoption professional is operating in an ethical and legal way. Without this outside review, there is very low accountability and no promise that an organization is conducting itself according to the right adoption regulations. So what does this have to do with the amendment? And as you've heard through many days, that there have been attempts to ensure there's a regulatory process. Because with the addition of adoption agency, which is not even defined in GCA, it only appears in GAR. I think that's problematic. And as you heard in the governor's letter, Department of Public Health has a regulatory authority. They rightfully have the authority to create these rules and regs. I think 180 days would be an expedited timeframe, but I think it's still feasible for this regulatory agency to develop such rules and regs to ensure the protection of all parties. And I think this is the reason, the rationale behind this. You know, I think that there is a way to improve, I think we're all here to try to improve the environment. And I think this amendment helps to bring the parties together to ensure that our children are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the amendment? Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you're recognized on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, I'm going to rise to object to this amendment. I believe that all services that an adoption agency provide must abide by the adoption policies and control, and no child goes to an adoption agency. They go to a home, a home that must be approved by public health. And for me, this amendment provides no additional protection, Madam Speaker. And I, I believe that as public health maintains its procedures, I think this amendment would not add any, any protection. So I'm going to respectfully object.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Taitegui, you're recognized on the amendment.
Situs Ma Sina, Madam Speaker. And I rise in full support of this amendment. I think, I mean, if anything, I was told that, you know, it does give the opportunity for public health to write their rules and regulations with regards to anyone who deals as an adoption agency on Guam. Nothing stops them from doing so. This would give enough time to do, to have this done. Madam Speaker, it was brought up earlier, and even again today, about how simple it is for this is for this company to come in here and open up an adoption agency while you have people who are cutting hair, have more stringent laws to have to deal with, let alone, they get their business license at Revantax. After that, they have to go to Department of Public Health and follow their guidelines and rules and regulations and standards just to cut hair. This gives enough time for Department of Public Health to put together these guidelines and rules that oversee these private companies that come to Guam to open up. 180 days is enough time for public health to do so, and I stand in full support of this. And I thank the author for at least coming up with something that might help, you know, move this forward. Because like I said before, none of us are against having an adoption agency on this island. We just need one that has guidelines and standards that they have to meet, like every other business on this island. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, Senator Brown, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, we put our personalities aside, because I think a lot of this resistance probably is based on that. And simply look at this issue, even if we don't want to do it or move this bill without, because it does appear that this bill's going to move forward if it's going to be voted on, if we stay in line of the votes that have come down with the preceding amendments. It's going to pass without this requirement in place that we've been talking about with regards to putting rules and regulations in place for an adoption agency on Guam. Certainly, this amendment would support the opportunity, as mentioned by the previous speakers, for public health to put that in place, begin the process of doing so. There's a need for it. This puts a significant gap in our laws where things that are of less relevance require these hurdles to be met, these requirements for rules and regulations and procedures that we can evaluate, operations within the government that we allow or we permit and we oversee. And for this bill to proceed without allowing this time to put these things in place really weaken the system. Because this bill as it is, without having this in place, Madam Speaker, really is not a perfect bill. This, to me, this requirement of having these things in place, these standards in place are probably the most important thing we could put in this bill. And if this bill moves forward without it, it's hard to go out there and tell our people that we're looking out for the best interests of our children. If it's something to me that is so basic, should be so standard, is not here. It's not here. It's not in this version that's before us. And can you imagine the simple requirement if this could have avoided this whole process? And now this bill isn't as clean and as perfect as we'd like it to be. So I do support the amendment, and certainly if it passes without it, then perhaps there's another bill that needs to be introduced to put this in place. Because I will tell you, Madam Speaker, the first time an incident happens, the first time an incident happens, well, I think the people of Guam are all going to be looking at us and wondering, why didn't we put these standards in place so that there's no confusion and there's no misunderstanding? But no, we're going to take our children and put them in the hands of an adoption agency that have no rules and regulations that they're required to meet in our statute that's clear as day for anyone to see. That's what we're going to do if we proceed without putting these requirements in place and also this timeline that's proposed by Senator Perez. I think that would be rather unfortunate. So I stand, Madam Speaker, in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Very welcome, Senator Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Anyone else? Senator Mary, on the amendment, I will allow you to speak.
I'm just raising a point of objection if it wasn't clear. Thank you.
On the point of objection, is there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Anyone else? If not, Senator Perez, you may close. I do apologize. Senator Perez, please, I apologize. Speaker, I wanted to speak on the amendment, so I will allow her. Madam Speaker, I will recognize you to speak on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment, and I heard something that the sponsor said and that really struck a chord with me, and that is that this gives the parties an opportunity to work together, to kind of regroup. And I think that is reasonable under the circumstances. It's not every day that an agency, you know, raises concerns and then a governor comes in and says, you know, we support it anyways. So I just think because of these unusual circumstances, we're talking about the Department of Public Health and in particular, the Bosa Division, the Bureau of Social Services, which actually, as a division, has an excellent record of working with the children of Guam, of providing services for them. And within this division is CPS, which we all know has had issues for years, which were not entirely caused simply by them or their management, although, you know, there may be some issues there, but it's caused by all of us, Madam Speaker. It is caused by the issues that Guam is facing, the issues that the children of Guam are facing, that it is incumbent upon us to resolve. And so when they declared an emergency at CPS, one thing I was grateful for was that they brought in from another department additional social workers to assist CPS. And I think this is the way to handle these things, not to throw everybody under the bus or just simply criticize, but to bring in the workers. And I commended them for that, and I continue to commend them for that. And I met with the acting director of CPS, Lonnie Brennan, after she was assigned there, and I was very happy with her focus that we are going to assist, and then we're going to move back to DYA, but we're going to make sure that the vacant positions are filled here at CPS. We're going to make sure that we've done everything in our power to boost them up. And that's what they needed. That's what they still need. And then we've heard since then about, really, despite all efforts, despite a declaration of emergency for CPS, they are still struggling to hire social workers, and we need to rectify that, Madam Speaker. Not privatize our CPS, not to privatize Bosa. This is in large part a regulatory agency. It's them who we, the public, by our laws, have completely entrusted to take care of these children. And so we are going to trust them to do this. And I really feel for the classified employees who have gone through governor after governor and, you know, maybe lack of resources for decades and a growing number of children in need for decades. I feel for them. I want their concerns to be heard, and I want those concerns to be rectified, not to schmooze it over with, let's bring in somebody else from off-island and let them take care of our kids for us. I very much disagree with that. If there's any adoption agency that's going to work with CPS, then let them work with CPS under our current laws, and let's not prioritize them over every other adoptive parent that's been waiting for years, and let's not prioritize them over anyone else. If they can assist, then by all means. When I met with them earlier, and then I met with Director Brennan again, and I met with Deputy Director Terry Uggan, they all agree they can work together. It's us, the legislature, that is coming in and saying, we don't want them to work together, we want to create this hierarchy that is going to shift what is in place. And I think if we keep denying that, that that's just not true. And I think, you know, in prior, it's unfortunate, prior administrations, they used to call it gag orders, they used to call it all kinds of things, and we would criticize every administration that would silence employees of a government agency who have been doing this work for years and their input. I mean, even at the hearing, we had other people from the Department of Public Health, and they were very much in unison. And they were asking us, please let us do this. We can work with this one adoption agency that you really want to create a preference for, and we can work with them. They told us they could, and they told us they would. And I very much believe that they will if we give them an opportunity. But I think, and that's why I see this amendment as an opportunity, as opposed to an all-out, defiant, in-your-face, we don't believe you, we don't trust you. And actually, this is what creates distrust in people of Guam, because we're talking about an agency that we're supposed to trust, and the legislature's saying, we're now going to trust some private entity? We don't trust this government agency anymore? This is, this is why during, I mean, that's not the sentiment you want to be, I think, contributing to as a legislature. That's what, when we need the people to respond, we need them to trust. we don't want them to be questioning public health, whether they are constrained by politics. We don't want them to be questioning the deputy directors, the directors, or even the classified employees, whether they are being constrained by politics. I think we need to keep politics out of it, and let's just stick to the facts. The facts are, when I called Melanie Brennan in and I asked her, are there any, this is prior even to this bill being introduced, because the adoption agency had come to my office and asked that they be made part of the process. And so I asked Acting Director Brennan at the time, is there any issues? And she said, there may have been, but there aren't anymore because we have now hired retired CPS workers. And these are excellent CPS workers. I'm sure everyone in this room knows them, the retirees. And they came in, and she said there was no backlog for adoptions, there was no backlog for home studies for adoptions. And at that part, at the very least, was great news for me, that that was going to be taken care of. And so I ask that we allow them, if this 180 days in development of some kind of working procedures is going to allow them to work together, then I think that's excellent. And so I very much stand in support of this amendment, Madam Speaker. I thank the sponsor. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, I will recognize my naughty leader, Senator Duñez. You are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. This has certainly been a very interesting exchange. I think all of us here are certainly in support of what the bill wants to do, Bill 108. Was going to speak on the motion, but it seems like this amendment can encapsulate some of the things that you just mentioned, Madam Speaker, and why I support the amendment. I was speaking to one of my colleagues in one of the time, the recesses that we had off, and I said, given the letter from the governor, I would imagine, I would hope that, having heard the debate, the governor would not only be signing the bill, but having an executive order right next to her to sign, establishing a working group to address concerns. Because there's nothing wrong with that. Madam Speaker, I believe, as I was going to speak on the main motion, but I think this is an appropriate time as well, that the regulatory process is durable, that it is clear that public health has jurisdiction, that the laws of Guam, and I believe some of those will be enumerated by the main sponsor in the closing, have a lot of protections built in. I guess where I started to see some of the discussion on the bill and the public hearing as I went back through the committee report, and I took a chance to look at some of O'Halla's comments, and then even on their website, Madam Speaker, they say, we stand ready to provide the best possible services for the children, for the people of Guam, under whatever regulatory and under whatever circumstances the government of Guam establishes. I, if you look at, and I'm glad you brought up Ms. Brennan again, Mrs. Brennan again, Madam Speaker, because in speaking with the author and in looking at what was placed in Section 5, a lot of that came from at least the movement towards strengthening the regulatory issues and the review, and that's what made me very confident, an oversight, making sure that they're expansive and that they have that capability to do the proper reviews and to do what needs to be done when it comes to adoption agencies. I was a little surprised, Madam Speaker, that, because I voted for the rules and regs, the other amendment that didn't pass. But I was a little surprised, and this is not taking it out on anyone, but along with the amendments that were provided and that were initially supplied to us, that was under Terry Uggan's signatures, I kind of thought we would have a template here. Look at this. And like I said, I'm not criticizing, but what I'm saying is, it was obvious to me that the passion that was put into that was designed around ensuring that we did go that extra step. What I like about this amendment as well is it's open-ended. I think you, I think you hit the nail on the head, Madam Speaker. It is allowing those who are in the trenches, doing the work, to make those recommendations and bring them back to us. And I don't think, because even with Section 5 that we put in, I don't, all those prescriptions for time periods, I don't think 180 days is unrealistic at all. Because the statute is durable as it stands, you're adding to that statute because you're adding something. I will say, and if you go in and you listen to some of the testimony, because there was some very good testimony by other nonprofits, Ms. Nauta comes to mind, that she has, you know, had that experience of having expectant mothers who have decided that they don't want for some reason or can't, I won't say don't want, nobody wouldn't want a baby, but that for some reason, whatever life circumstance exists, they have chosen. but that for some reason, whatever life circumstance exists, they have chosen, whether it be their youth, whether it be their circumstances, whether it be finances, whatever it is, they don't want to terminate that pregnancy, but they want a better home and a better life for that child. So, the need is there for what the bill contains on certain alacrity and certain opportunities to make sure that the process also isn't cumbersome, and to make sure that regulatory controls match with being able to facilitate. I mean, that's what this bill is about, streamlining, making government work in a way that's effective, but that also, one of, you know, Madam Speaker, I know that this is not a pro-life bill, but it has that implication of making things easier, of making things easier for those who are facing a tough decision. A lot of these adoptions are going to be babies, as we've talked about. And there are going to be some babies that are going to come into this world because a decision was made that there's a process in place that's easy. I've got this tough decision, but O'Halla's there, or somebody else is there. I'm going to deal with the government, but there's an adoption agency where I can know that having, having made this decision, that I don't want to terminate this life, but I want to give it to somebody, but I want to make sure, I want a process in place that's befitting of my, maintaining my dignity and having this process going forward. I don't think this is unreasonable. It's not amending sections. One of the things that I wrestled with, with some of the discussions and some of the sections is, I'm not saying the profit amendments were wrong, I was just saying, the reason why I finally came to terms with the rules and regs is because that will, that will go through I still believe, Madam Speaker, whether this amendment passes or not, whether it's some of us on the floor here, or in this body, that will get together and, and work to promulgate, or whether it's the governor herself who sees the need and says, like I said, alongside the bill signage is an executive order. Terry, you guys, your team, and everything else, I believe in you, I need a recommendation coming back to me on anything that we may have missed. We can do it now. I just think it's open-ended enough, and it's not, not to say many of the passionate speeches that were made earlier weren't recognizing the fact that there was some solid stuff that could have done what needed done, but hey, like you said, Madam Speaker, we're putting it back to the, to the pros. But we're also giving notice that there is, and that's why other jurisdictions have adoption agencies. Have they always been perfect? No. And I think that's why we talked about wanting to protect it. But believe me, I know there are thousands and thousands of kids who are in happy homes now because of adoption agencies. And I'm sure there are governments stateside that said, you know what, we don't do all of this very well. We're a big bureaucratic cumbersome operation. There's some things we just don't do good, that a private nonprofit or others can be helpful with. Streamlining, that's normally the term we use when we try to make government work better. So, Madam Speaker, I think this is a reasonable proposal, and it basically calls on something that regardless of the outcome of this bill, which I'm still going to vote for, I just believe that that's going to be the outcome anyways. I don't think yourself, I don't think others on this floor will be comfortable not knowing that there are, that we've got folks on the case. And in closing, once again, this is not to say that Melanie doesn't have the capabilities. Obviously, she demonstrated her skills at the court. I think she was a great choice for DYA. But it wasn't Melanie, as you said, Madam Speaker, it was the team. And I was not surprised either when DYA was tapped for this, because if you know the social workers at DYA, Madam Speaker, these are their clients. I don't know how many times, as the director, either meeting with judges or getting calls from judges, when I wondered why we had placements sometimes in our status offender facility. And the judge would say, "Chris, it's just because I trust your people." Especially when it came to that area, not necessarily, I'm not, the criminal side, of course, is different, but when you're talking about care and custody of those, those children who are, who've gone astray in terms of they're beyond control or other issues that are plaguing them outside of committing crimes, it was always, "We trust DYA." In closing, Madam Speaker, I also look at this, and the reason why I liked a lot of what we're, where we're going here is the relationship between DYA and Sanctuary. That is a model also that mirrors a public-private partnership, where you've got a board in place and you've got operations that are overseen because of the federal grants and everything else coming into Guam under Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. You have a private nonprofit that the regulatory operation generates the rules of Guam and the rules that control what happens with juveniles. But Sanctuary is that nonprofit. Sanctuary is that place where that child goes when you're working on the efforts to take care of that child, rebuild their lives outside of the juvenile justice system. This is, this is a decent comparison, because the same players are involved, Madam Speaker. You've got public health, you've got CPS, you've got social services, you have all these things. These people all know each other. It's one of the reasons why during our budget hearings, they've been saying, "Do what you can to continue to build capacity with social workers," because it's becoming a difficult So, yes, these are the people that have to be supported, the boots on the ground. So, I think it's a reasonable compromise, and I think it doesn't take away from the bill at all, Madam Speaker. So, this is Madam Speaker for the opportunity to speak in favor.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, on the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted maybe recap what Bill 108 does. And so, in looking at the parent and child statute under 19GCA Chapter 4, it states, "The purpose of this article is to protect and promote the welfare of children, natural parents, and adoptive parents, and thereby promote the welfare of the territory of Guam. To this end, the following basic safeguards are provided." And so, in this bill, it states that one of those safeguards is that the child is placed in a proposed adoptive home by the Division of Social Services, except in adoptions by close relatives, or, let me go back to the bill, or an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law. Okay, that's where we first see that phrase in GCA. There is no definition. In looking at and hearing the debate thus far, what we've come to learn is that what it takes to be licensed adoption agency here in Guam is simply having a business license. So, what the bare minimum would be, so would basically an adoption agency in order to be licensed, would be very similar to those companies that sell cars, run a mom-and-pop retail store, or sell cigarettes. There is nothing else in law that states, this is the only licensing requirements for an adoption agency, so far as what GCA says. And so, we've been hearing that public health is the regulatory authority, but by putting this language in there, it undermines that authority if there are no rules and regs in place. And so, really, there's a gap that needs to be filled. And what this amendment does, it gives the time that is needed to close this gap. You know, sometimes I've heard this phrase that it's a failed bureaucracy, right? Public health is a failed bureaucracy, the same entity that has pulled us through the And I think what we're doing here could be potentially harmful, because we're not providing the resources that are needed to assure this regulatory gap is filled. I think this idea that, you know, there's definitely this, this idea that privatization is going to solve our problems. What privatization does, it relinquishes, by relinquishing our authority to somebody else, you know, we're basically relinquishing the problem to somebody else. That's what the general assumption is. But I think there is more accountability on government to assure that whichever private entity that we're dealing with is achieving the services that are needed. So, what we think of as relinquishing our problem is actually creating more responsibility on the government. And as such, we need to give the time that is needed for public health, who we see as a regulatory authority, to carry out this, this responsibility. This is something that is just, I think, is reasonable. Otherwise, we are opening ourselves up to potential liabilities. Again, you know, prevention is better than having to deal with the issues after the fact. I think this is important, this is an important amendment, you know, by assuring we give the time that is needed for public health to develop these regulatory framework. You know, what does, what does it take for adoption agencies to be licensed? We know it's, is it just, you know, paying for the license fee and that's it? There's nothing in GCA that has anything. So, we need to be able to spell that out if we are to protect all parties involved. And I think this is in the best interest of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, there's been an objection, so all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Parrish, you're still recognized on the bill. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill? On the bill, Vice Speaker?
There's been a lot of talk on this bill, what it does or does not do. I think one of the issues is that it's not clear despite, you know, all the discussion. We kind of still have an opinion in front of us that if we pass this bill, we are not going to be affecting the authority of public health in regards to the placement of children who have been put up for adoption, relinquished under the Safe Haven Act, or put up because of emergencies, family situations. I know that's not, and so, and the reason why that's unclear is because, you know, we've got testimony that conflicts. Even despite the governor's letter saying it's clear, I don't think it's clear. There's no citation in her letter. It says, "It was discussed that DPHSS is empowered to do so through its Enabling Act as the regulatory authority for child welfare and child placement." That's as to the regulation of private adoption agencies. Public health, when they testified, said they are not aware at all of authority, of any authority that they would be given to do that. There was an amendment to the bill after the public hearing that says they can look at these adoption agencies and, trying to remember what the time period was, it wasn't before they act, it's after. And I think I brought it up earlier in one of the amendments that was being proposed, that it gives them an opportunity to audit an adoption agency. This is after the adoption agency has already been involved in all the ways that this bill would allow them to be involved, where currently adoption agencies are not involved in that process. They can assist in that process. They can propose adoptive parents to CPS right now, today, without any bill being passed. They can propose that they, with their qualifications, have researched these proposed adoptive parents and say that they are excellent. They can propose that in their research, these proposed adoptive parents will be able to meet the specific needs of a specific child that is up for adoption. That's what our statutes mandate public health to find. And public health can work with these adoption agencies currently, and I believe they are to do this. The issue for me is that the bill wants to change that balance. It wants to put an adoption agency at the same level as public health when it comes to choosing the homes, not just recommending, but deciding, and in removing children who normally are in the custody of public health from hospitals. All of these things, I think, public health is capable of doing, that as a regulatory agency, or I don't know what you're going to call them, but as an agency, just like in other jurisdictions who are entrusted to do this, that we continue to authorize them to do that, and we make it very clear. I really just thought that after the public hearing, you know, when public health raised their concerns, that, you know, and they asked that if, you know, that there be more discussion on it, that was so clear to me at the time. I never imagined that we would be here today, kind of in defiance of their concerns. And I'm not by any means saying that public health is perfect. We know we have a crisis there, but I am saying, at least we know, and we can control what public health does. We can change the standards, if it's the standards that we ultimately find that have, you know, created the issue, but we can't do that with private adoption agencies after we pass this bill. Only after a certain, sorry, only after a certain amount of time can they audit these adoption agencies. Sorry, I was looking for that part of the bill, but I forgot. Sorry, I was looking for that part of the bill, but I forgot. And, you know, I brought it up earlier as well, that they can audit here, annual, an annual audit within 180 days of enactment of this section. They will audit the records, but it doesn't give them any kind of teeth. It doesn't give public health any kind of authority what to do if they're not in compliance, or they're not, just really, if they're not not in compliance with the provisions of Title 19. It's kind of like backwards. Instead of licensing them and authorizing them as approved by public health, we're saying they're approved. Everybody's approved. Any adoption agency that comes in is approved until after 180 days, you know, they can be audited. So that's just my, those are my concerns on the bill. I believe that public health's concerns are still very valid. And I feel like we should get to the root of those as opposed to the changes that are proposed in this bill. But I really wanted to speak on the bill because I think, you know, just because of what we've seen. And, um, you know, we had not just one, but several representatives from public health at the hearing who said, who had worked in this area, who had worked under BOSA. Not all of them had worked with the children, but they had all worked with BOSA, and they said this process is working. If anything, they need more resources, but otherwise, their process can work. Anyways, I'm just kind of concerned about the testimony from public health being, I don't know, that a letter was sent from the governor saying, you know, we are speaking now on behalf of public health. You know, when we confirm these directors, that's one of the questions I ask them. What are you going to do, you know, when there's a lot of political pressure? And they always admit that there will be political pressure. Because I think it's very clear to the public, and at least to me, even before I became a senator, that that's one of the biggest issues that our directors face. It's like if we're putting them in these places like REVEN Tax, public health, where they have huge powers, that they have to be able to exercise those based on the work of the people in their, in their agencies, the facts, the science, and that they cannot succumb to political pressure. They have to be independent, no matter who appointed them. Because if they not, the public is not going to trust them. It's not what we want to see, you know, in our agencies, who we want to trust. We, you know, the Organic Act requires a merit system. And it's because of that, because we know that there are huge political pressures in any agency. And the directors change, and there's huge pressure, you know, to conform to what every new director says, every new governor says, every new legislature says. And they, they have to do that. But I don't know, I have a lot of respect for the people who do this work. And I don't want to make it any more difficult for us to be recruiting social workers in the government of Guam that are greatly needed. I don't want to have to privatize social workers in the government of Guam. I want government social workers who are beholden to nobody and nothing else, except the children that they are serving. And who are protected in their jobs and in their capacities, that what they feel is best for these children is going to be honored. They're going to go out on a limb for these kids. They've done that. They bring them into their own homes when they have to. They spend all kinds of hours. They've dedicated their lives to work that would get the best of me. The day in and day out. And so I want to honor them, and I want to respect them, and I want to tell them, we know you are the experts. And we know, of course, there are other people in the world who can help us. Let them help us. Let them not come in and tell you, you don't know what you're doing. We know better. I just believe this is the time that, you know, we shore up these agencies that have been lacking in resources, that we shore up these agencies that have, you know, told us straight out, we can do this. Just, we just need your help. We need your support. And I just feel like passing this bill does not give them that signal that we are supporting you. It's almost the opposite, and I hate to say, I don't know. That's how it looks to me. If they all come in and say, we can do this, please give us a chance to work this out ourselves, and we say no. So it's for those reasons, I'm standing to just express, you know, as many have expressed, there's, we all want to help these children. We all may think, you know, one agency knows more than our Department of Public Health when it come, or CPS, in fact. But I don't know, that, I haven't seen that, Madam Speaker. There's nothing in front of us that proves that CPS is incompetent in this area. That's, in fact, they've said the opposite. They said they had no backlog, or that CPS is unable to do this job, or that CPS is unable to work with adoption agencies that want to come to Guam, or that CPS is unable to do the rules that they begged us to allow them to do if we are going to allow adoption agencies on Guam. In the end, we all know we have to help. And CPS, I think, has kept this mission very clear, and I'm very grateful for that. They remind us of it. Even Director Brennan, when she was assigned to temporary, reminded us that, you know, we are not here to necessarily remove babies from families. We are here as a mandate of law to reunite families wherever possible, to place babies with same ethnic background where all possible, to take care of the individual needs of those babies, to find homes if we think it's a temporary situation, or while we're trying to work it out with the families, to work with the courts, to do home studies whenever they are asked. And I just, I don't think it's perfect. There's no agency on Guam that is perfect, but I do think that they have capabilities to do their job if given the proper resources, Madam Speaker, and I would like to see them do that because they are the classified workers. Supposedly, they have no other interests that is going to dissuade them from doing what is in the best interest of the child, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome, Speaker. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Mary Torres-Humayle, close your bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank my colleagues for their discussion of Bill 108 these past few days. Though I've come to expect opposition on the floor, I appreciate that we can at least raise awareness on the plight of our children in Guam. That said, while certain individuals may be entitled to their own opinion, no one here is entitled to their own facts. So I'd like to take a moment to correct some of those false statements that were made during the deliberations of Bill 108. The first claim I want to address was one made by a member of this body that our former U.S. Attorney, Alicia Lim Tia Ko, believes this bill will lead to human trafficking. Upon recess, I spoke to Attorney Lim Tia Ko. She called me, and she transmitted the following statement to me and asked that I read it into the record. And I'm quoting from her. Attorney Lim Tia Ko has not reviewed the proposed legislation, Bill Number 108-36 and 109-36. And therefore, any statements attributed to her were not made specific to or about Bill Number 108-36 or Bill Number 109-36. Any statements about human trafficking were general in nature and not related directly to Bill 108-36 and 109-36. And so, Madam Speaker, Attorney Lim Tia Ko affirmed that she has not even seen the bill and therefore did not say what was so eagerly misrepresented on Tuesday. So to be absolutely clear and on the record, neither Attorney Lim Tia Ko nor any attorney I have spoken to has concluded that this bill will do what opponents claim it will. But they say if you tell a lie big enough and keep repeating it, people will eventually come to believe it. And despite using those words over and over again, not one opponent has been able to explain how this bill specifically opens the door to human trafficking. Just think about it logically, Madam Speaker. How would the baby even leave the hospital without public health clearing it? The baby is assigned a case number under Guam law, the Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act. In this bill's Section 1308, Subsection H, the Bureau of Social Services has to contact the adoption agency first to notify them to take guardianship of the baby. If you weren't the agency contacted, you don't get the baby. Social Services then maintains legal custody of the baby until the termination of parental rights, which has to be approved by the court. So if that adoption agency, which, remember, was selected and contacted by the Bureau, decides to just run off with the baby instead of taking it to the pre-approved home, then public health, the courts of Guam, and the Guam Police Department will know about it. Anyone with any knowledge of how adoptions actually work here understands this because it's the same process that private attorneys are using to facilitate adoptions right now. And I have never heard any concerns of human trafficking toward them. A second false claim made by a member of this body is that this bill was rushed to the floor as it was only heard a few weeks ago. While I too feel as if the year's quickly moving by, both Bills 108 and 109 were duly heard by the committee over two months ago on April the 20th of this year. As stated in the findings and recommendation which is available for all of my colleagues to read, the committee chose not to move forward on this measure until the current Director of Child Protective Services felt her concerns were satisfied. It was only after Director Brennan transmitted her letter to the committee chair that Bill 108 was reported out. And while I'm thankful for any feedback from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, I will remind my colleagues that Executive Order 2021-02 moved CPS from public health to DYA in January of this year. This was done because under public health, cases went unreviewed and too many children did not get the help they needed. And those aren't my words, Madam Speaker, they're the governor of Guam's. And with nearly 1,000 cases backlog, she was forced to declare a state of emergency within the agency and give DYA oversight of all CPS operations. Interestingly enough, our Legislative Oversight Committee has not held one hearing regarding these matters since the administration decision was made. Third, it was repeatedly and inaccurately declared that this measure somehow bypasses public health. The only thing this bill bypasses, Madam Speaker, is an overburdened foster care system. Right now, an unharmed, unrelinquished baby, not an abused baby exerted by CPS, but a healthy, legally surrendered baby can go into foster custody under our laws. So all this bill ever set out to do was, one, ensure that instead of a foster home, the baby goes into a pre-approved adoptive home. And second, instead of CPS doing the placement, an adoption agency does it. Why? Well, because if a family has undergone extensive background checks and had their homes evaluated by a social worker and passed the preapproval process under Guam law, why would CPS need to decide who gets the child? Does CPS decide the home in private adoption cases? No. So why would they hear necessarily? And so I repeat, my bill does not change the extensive screening process these homes and parents must undergo. A process that requires the court's review, a lengthy home study, and public health's approval. It was also suggested, Madam Speaker, that the inclusion of an adoption agency in the, in the committee somehow strips public health of their power. But this inclusion was not made at the urging of Ohalla. It was made by request of CPS. In fact, Director Brennan felt that the adoption of a new member was important because too many times, the committee could not move forward if there was a tie among its four members. And if the inclusion of one member is enough to sway the opinion of two caseworkers, one social worker, and the adoption supervisor, then perhaps we don't have the right government representatives on there. The issue wouldn't just be the member. And finally, I want to address the completely callous remarks made by a member of this body who didn't even have the decency to talk to Ohalla Adoptions. Ohalla, a Chamoril word which means hope. It means God willing. Lori Boss is not some girl from Oregon, Madam Speaker. She is a certified and trained professional who works with mothers to provide them critical support during and after childbirth. As the Director of Guam's first adoption agency, she has provided education and resources for adoptive parents and counseling to birth mothers. Together, she, Tracy Anderson, and Kelly Larson work day and night to offer hope, comfort, and dignity to women on Guam, which is more than many people will ever say about themselves personally. When a pregnant woman comes to Ohalla, their first discussion is to review her options, her support system, and talk through her reason for placement. To date, they have helped far more women find a way to keep their children than they have placed in adoptive homes. And they are happy to do so because many women simply don't know where to turn. Contrary to some erroneous claims, Ohalla is not an off-island adoption agency, nor does it do international adoptions. Ohalla has stated, and I quote, "To make it clear, we are only a domestic agency. We are not here to deport children, but to help serve the families of Guam. Our purpose is to support women in crises and help save the lives of babies." There were comments made about doing this out of the goodness of our hearts. The actual answer is actually yes. We do not receive any pay. We are trying our best to help a system that we see as overwhelmed, outdated, and not using best practices as they are recognized today. As I stated in my opening, international adoptions fall under the regulatory umbrella of the Hague Adoption Convention. And before you can And before you can proceed, the adopting parents must retain the services of a Hague-accredited service provider to shepherd the process, or you're not going to get through U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services through our Department of Homeland Security. I want to emphasize that just because a person doesn't know the law doesn't mean it's not there. Upon establishment, Ohalla has completed the following Hague-compliant training courses. Bonding and Attachment Issues in Domestically Adopted Children. How Does It Feel Your Adopted Child and Emotions? Medical Risks for Domestically Adopted Children. Multicultural and Transracial Adoption. Openness in Adoption. Our Child Is Home, Now What? Separation, Loss, and Grief in Adoption Triad. Domestically Adopted Traumatized Child. These women have completed these courses on their own. They also have requested to be audited repeatedly by Public Health. So instead of questioning an agency that is simply trying to address a massive failure on our government's part, instead of questioning an agency that has repeatedly requested oversight, we should be considering what is it that we can do to make that happen, to push that oversight. Long before this bill was introduced, this adoption agency recognized the need for accountability. So what are we to do while we wait for bureaucracy to get its act together? What are our children to do? I, for one, won't institutionalize our kids for the sake of a system that has so overwhelmingly not been able to meet its mark. Every child, we all agree, deserves to grow up in a stable, loving family, not to be passed from home to home because that's just the way it's always been. That's what Bill 108 set out to do. And I encourage my colleagues to continue to stand by the facts and to pass this measure. It did, after all, Madam Speaker, receive the support of ten sponsors, Child Protective Services, the governor's office, and for those who are politically inclined, even the Republican Party of Guam. Why would so many people get behind this? Simply, they recognize a way to improve upon a system. And that's what Bill 108 does. It improves upon a system. And that's why it garnered so much support. And that's why I was able to answer every question that was presented because our adoptive procedures are in statute. Our rules and regulations are in statute. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I move that we place this bill on the third voting file, third, third reading voting file.
Thank you. On the motion, there's been an objection. On the motion, please raise your hand. On the motion to place Bill Number 108-36 COR on the third reading file, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. We're now on Bill Number 109-36 COR. We are going to recess until 10:00 a.m. on Monday. However, the, oh, sorry, 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, however, the youth congress will be using, they may be using the facility over the weekend, so please remove your items as necessary. Okay, so we will resume on Monday at, I mean, Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. on Bill Number 109-36. We are in recess.